Hello and welcome, candidates and guests, to this candidate forum. I'm Shannon Patrick, member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be the moderator for this forum this evening. Thank you all. And our timekeeper is Polly Horton. Huzzah! Thank you all for coming out on this evening, particularly given the weather forecast. If it gets particularly exciting and the sirens come on, I am told that our place of shelter is over in the southeast corner of this room.
Or the bathrooms.
Or the bathrooms. With luck, we won't have to know about any of that. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate. The League does, after considerable study, take positions on issues and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work not only to register voters, but also to provide them with information on issues and assist in their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone ages 16 years of age or older. Join us. We could use your time, your talent, and your financial resources. League members advocate and inform voters, and democracy works best when more people are involved. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. The format for this evening will be as follows. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them. Our schedule of questions comes from our audience and from League members. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. There will be no time for rebuttals. We are scheduled for an hour and a half. Near the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaker order will be rotated throughout the evening. Our timekeeper will be using cards to alert candidates when time is up and when the time is about to be up. League members are distributing cards and pencils to write questions on. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Simply hold up your cards, and a League member will collect them throughout the forum and bring them to me to read. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum or at another time. Early voting at the auditor's office began already on May 15th. Primary election day is June 4th. Tonight, we have five candidates running for three positions on the ballot in the June primary race. The results will set the fall ballot for the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. Our candidates are Bob Conrad, Lisa Green Douglas, Roy San Porter, Mandy Remington, and Rod Sullivan. Let's begin with two-minute opening statements, starting with Bob Conrad.
All right. Thank you. Well, first, thanks for coming out in the weather. I know that is a challenge, and they're kind of letting us go until like 11 o'clock before we really get to sleep well, but I want to thank everybody for coming here because this is an important part of the process we have. With five candidates up here and narrowing it to three, that is your choice. And to get to know the candidates, and I wish there was room was full of 200 people, but I think it's very important you're here, so thank you. So, a little bit about me. Grew up in western Iowa, ended up leaving western Iowa, ended up getting into law enforcement. My full-time job has been a state trooper the last 34, 35 years. And with that, I've been fortunate to work in a lot of areas, Des Moines, Waterloo, now in this area here in Iowa City for over 20 years. I've been very happy with the community. Moved here for the schools. The public school system was a big thing. We moved down here for family. We knew the environment. We knew how welcoming it'd be, and it's been nothing but that. As I look to retire, I want to give back to the community. I want to do my part in public service. Public service is at my core and always has been. Things that I have been involved in, obviously, as a state trooper, I've been a public resource officer, which involves going out and training other agencies and places in the state and in the different areas. Involved a lot of events throughout the state throughout the year. I'm also a crisis negotiator, peer support leader. So, I look at things a little different sometimes and think about how we can do things other than just, like a lot of people think law enforcement is all about arrests. That's not my case. I've been a trustee of our retirement fund for about 14 years, elected position. I've been a union director for 28 years. Very proud of that because it's taking care of people. I saw a need in the county for small business, ended up opening a childcare center, and we employ 52 people with full and part-time, give them a living wage, give them a way to give back to their community, and we provide a very valuable service. And currently, it senses, thanks, 174 children. So, for me, I'm really focused on a couple of different things. I'm focused on getting affordable housing, and I think everybody talks about it, but now it's time to do it. I think it's time to find those buildings repurposed, find the money, the grants, get the state and federal involved. Regional transportation is a big thing. I think, we talk about it, but we don't get there. I look at transparency in this county. I think it's very important that we get involvement from the community. That means getting forums before we take action, not after, and I think that's very much of my platform. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Green Douglas.
Okay. My name is Lisa Green Douglas, and I've been a member of the Board of Supervisors for eight years. Prior to that, I was a college professor for 20 years, and then when I left academia... How about that? Any better? Okay, I'll just talk louder. I'll use my mom voice and my professor voice and all that. Thanks for letting me know. When I left academia, I traveled across the country providing job-specific Spanish language training and cultural competence to a variety of professions. Most of my contracts were with law enforcement, correctional, and like fish and wildlife and that. So, it was fun, but it gave me a lot of perspective of how things are done in other places. And it kind of was my push into the Board of Supervisors, finally kind of saying, "Do it. You've been wanting to do it." And that was because I was seeing the large number of severely mentally ill who were incarcerated across the country. And so, since I've been on the board, I have championed mental health services. I've also worked for working families and conservation initiatives, and so I will continue to do that if I am re-elected.
Thank you. And for everybody, I think the microphones are probably set a little bit far back, so if you want to bring those forward a little bit, it will make it easier for the audience. Thank you. And just to make this easier to keep track of, my list here has you all in alphabetical, but that's not the way you're seated. So, to try and make it easier for you to tell who's going to speak next and when you're going to be next, I'm going to move down the line with your permission.
Yes.
All right. So, next, Ms. Remington.
My name is Mandy Remington. I moved to Johnson County from Okinawa at the age of 14. I've been living here since then. I've been renting in Johnson County since I was 17 years old. I've been raising children here since I was 20, working at the University of Iowa for the last 18 years. I've been a small business owner running in home childcare before I started working full-time at the university. And in my time at the university, I have been taking gradually increasing levels of responsibility and leadership in the DEI realm. I am the vice chair of the Council on the Status of Women, and I am a member of the DEI Success Collaborative, and both of those cross both the healthcare and the academic sides. When I left an abusive marriage about five years ago, in part of my process of seeking community, I founded the Corridor Community Action Network, which amplifies, provides ancillary support and networking opportunities for well over 100 organizations serving the corridor from across the state. And I hold monthly networking meetings with those organizations where we talk about how we can support each other and collaborate, and each other's common goals, what we need from each other, and what we need from the community. I am also ending a four-year term on the Iowa City Community Police Review Board. My last meeting will be here in just a couple of weeks. So, I am bringing a unique blend of lived experience, professional experience, and community organizing experience, along with the perspective of what it's like to struggle in Johnson County that has been missing from leadership for quite some time to make ends meet on one income in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Thanks. My name is Rod Sullivan. I'm an incumbent member of the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. I grew up on a farm that's been in my family for 180 years near the Sutliffe Bridge. I went K through 12 in the Lisbon School System. I'm an alumnus of the University of Iowa. I worked several years in the field of human services, doing a number of different jobs. I'm married to Dr. Melissa Fath, who's a cancer scientist at the UI and a volunteer pharmacist at the Free Medical Clinic. We have three adult children, one grandchild, and we served as foster parents to over 50 children. I'm a member of several community organizations, including St. Andrew Presbyterian Church, AFT Local 716, the Iowa City Federation of Labor. I spent four-plus years as the chair of the Johnson County Democratic Party. Some of the accomplishments of which I am most proud: leadership during both the COVID pandemic and the '08 floods. I was the chair during both of those moments. Raising the minimum wage, first county in Iowa to do so. Passing a human rights ordinance, first county in Iowa to do so. Passing a census areas ordinance, first county in Iowa to do so. Passing a conservation bond, first county in Iowa to do so. Passing a community ID program, first county in Iowa to do so. We started the Guide Link Center to address substance abuse and mental health concerns. We started the 1105 Project with the gift of the old public health building. Saved the Sutliffe Bridge after the floods. Have funded trails, created livable community for successful aging, local foods policy council, and much more. So, I look forward to your questions this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Porter.
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Roy San Porter. I reside here in Iowa City, Iowa, and I have been a proud resident of Johnson County for over 30 years. I currently serve as the Johnson County Supervisor, and I have held the position for five and a half years. Prior to this, I was a local 238 Teamster Organizer. I am married to Anthony Porter with two wonderful daughters, Antonia and Stacy, ages 30 and 32. It has been my honor and privilege to serve as your Johnson County Supervisor for the past five and a half years. Together, we've achieved milestones and progress that make our community stronger and more resilient. I am proud to have been the first African-American elected to a county seat in Johnson County and the first to serve as a chair. I am running for reelection because I am deeply committed to building on the progress we have made and continuing to serve the residents of Johnson County. As the first African-American elected to a county seat in Johnson County, I have worked tirelessly to address the needs of our community and advocate for positive change. During my time in office, I have fought for affordable housing, mental health services, and the rights of marginalized communities. I believe that there is still much work to be done, and I am dedicated to continuing this important work for the betterment of our county. I am proud of the accomplishments we have achieved together, but there is still more to do. I am running for reelection to ensure that our county government remains responsive, inclusive, and accountable to all residents. Together, we can continue to make Johnson County a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive and succeed. My service extends beyond the supervisor role. My extensive involvement in various committees and organizations underscores my commitment to addressing pressing issues facing the community. As vice chair of NACO, the National Association of Counties, Community Economic and Workforce Development Steering Committee, and as well as the NACO Housing Steer Committee out in Washington, DC, I've demonstrated expertise in economic development and housing policies. My roles as Secretary for NACO, the National Organization of Black County Officials and Women of NACO, reflects my dedication to advocating for marginalized communities and promoting diversity and inclusion in governance. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We'll now move on to our first question. Please describe your strongest competencies for serving as supervisor and your highest priority for the Board of Supervisors. We'll begin with Ms. Green Douglas.
Well, I would say that my strongest competency is that I ask a lot of questions. I ask a lot of questions. That is how I learn information and process new things. So, we hear from subject matter experts, and I know how to research. I have a PhD and learned those skills back when I got that PhD of research. And you look at multiple sources for information. But we start with our subject matter experts, asking questions. And I have lots of opinions about things, but tell you what, sometimes then I get facts and I have to change those opinions. And I'm not afraid to do so once I have information that contradicts my opinions.
Ms. Remington.
My strongest competency is my ability to bring people together and to see interconnectedness between issues. For example, being able to suggest to the League of Women Voters when trying to find out how to get information about voting restoration to the folks who needed it, that they contact the Inside Out Reentry Community because that's where those folks go for other services. I have been, like I said, networking organizations that serve the corridor from across the state for the last five years. And we need both experts and lived experience in everything that we do. There are various nuances that you're not going to pick up on if you're just looking at one of those things, and I know the experts in our community, and I know the people with the lived experience, and I can bring that to the table as I work on my priorities of increasing access to basic needs in our community as somebody who has been struggling to make ends meet and raise three children on one income.
Mr. Sullivan.
I would say the three biggest things I bring to the table are knowledge, experience, and hard work. And those are three things that I will continue to do every day that you allow me to serve. In terms of what I see coming in the future, my biggest priority is we are in the midst of a mental health crisis. It looks a little different for everybody, but it is broad and deep, and I've never experienced anything like it, and I think we have a lot of work to do to address all the various mental health issues that are at play in our community, and it's going to take a lot of time, money, and effort to address that.
Ms. Porter.
Yes. My strongest competency would be I do a lot of community events, and one of the things that I love doing is building relationships, partnerships, and collaborations. So, for me, it's listening, being able to not only go someplace and be the speaker, but to hear what people's concerns are. And that's everybody in our community, not just certain people. I'm always listening to all residents of Johnson County, no matter who you are. I just think that if we're going to get something done, I just don't want to be the one making the decision. I need to know what I'm going off of and what others are thinking and what others are wanting. So, just for me, listening, I'll follow Supervisor Sullivan. He said, "We're in the midst of mental health crisis." Not only that, food insecurity as well right now is something that we really have to and we're struggling with. It's one of the things that we have to look into, so that's what it is for me.
All right. Thank you. I think one of my biggest attributes is public service. I've spent a life in public service. I've always been about serving other people, other people's needs, other people's concerns, and I will continue that strongly in this county. One of the things that I look at is my unique skill set. So, when you look at what I've accomplished with my employment, what I started a small business that was needed in the community, taking care of members of our union, is around 700 strong, 1,300 of those members' retirements accounts for the rest of their life. I'm used to dealing with budgets. I'm used to dealing with things that make sense in a county that needs to be run efficiently and effectively. I end up building relationships. I really believe we've got to build bridges, not tear them down. I think we can have differences, and we can have differences in the meetings, but I think at some point, we've got to come together and see the common good, not go our separate directions. People, not politics. I think when you think about that, that really brings us together. Too much politics, people are not trusting politicians, and I understand why. Transparency needs to be there. I'm going to have transparency conversations. We're going to have public forums before. I know that may seem like we're spending more time, but that's what it does, and it comes right down to your money and your needs.
Thank you. I'm still hearing from the back that it's a little bit hard for everybody to hear you, so if you could, again, move your microphones up a little bit. I realize that can get a little bit tricky managing your papers, but we'd like everybody here and online to be able to hear you.
Absolutely.
All right. Our next question is on affordable housing. So, what is your plan for affordable housing for the county? What steps would you take to create more affordable housing and to keep it affordable? And we are starting with Ms. Remington.
I wouldn't go so far as to say that any one supervisor can have their own plan, but I have a lot of ideas that need to be brought to the table for affordable housing. Again, I've been renting in this community my entire adult life, and it's a struggle. I currently spend half of my take-home pay on rent alone, not including utilities. The city of Dubuque is looking at a federal grant to purchase their manufactured home parks to turn that into affordable housing, which also solves the problem of those being bought by these out-of-state corporations that are jacking up the lot rent. That is something that we should be looking at. We also need to be talking about incentivizing landlords to stagger leases so we don't have a week where so many of our folks have nowhere to live, and incentivizing landlords to accept housing vouchers since we're not allowed to require them to anymore. The county and Center for Worker Justice's program to incentivize employers to raise the minimum wage worked really well and was extremely successful, and we need to apply that same creativity to housing.
Well, affordable housing is something I've been working on for over 35 years. I was a social worker by trade, and very quickly, one of the first things you learn is that the people with whom you're working can't afford to live in this community. And, you know, so I think it's really important to note, I've been on the Housing Trust Fund Board for a long time. That's an organization that funds most of the affordable housing that happens in this community. In the last three years, the Housing Trust Fund has funded almost 400 units, which sounds great, and it kind of is great. But you know how many we're short? 8,000. So, I think it's really important with this question that people understand the county can't fix this alone. We can do what we can do. We need state and federal assistance. One of the ideas that came from the late Bob Welch that I think we've never capitalized on is using some of the seniors that are out there that have extra square footage. We could have students live there. They might be able to help each other out in a lot of different ways. That's something I think we need to work on, and I ran out of time. Thank you.
Looping around you, Ms. Porter.
Absolutely. The county grapples with the shortage of affordable housing options leading to housing insecurity and homelessness for many residents. Rising housing costs and limited availability pose significant challenges for low-income families and individuals. One of the things that I can speak on, like Supervisor Sullivan said, I came on board in 2011, working with him on affordable housing. So, one of the things we can do is leverage existing funding. The county provides substantial funding to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County, the Johnson County General Assistance Program, and Shelter House, our local shelter. These funds are essential for developing and preserving affordable housing, offering emergency relief, and providing shelter to those in need. And one thing is to strengthen our partnership with the Housing Trust Fund to ensure efficient use of funds for affordable housing projects. We can also support the Shelter House and our general relief by continuing to keep the money available because affordable housing in Johnson County is not affordable. Like he said, we have been, this initiative have been worked on for so very long, so we know that it's one of our main issues.
All right. When I look at affordable housing, first, I identify what affordable housing is. Affordable housing is safe housing. It's housing where people feel safe at home, where they can lay their head, where they're not bugs, toxins, where there's not problems and issues, where there's not three families trying to share one house, and there's sleeping bags on the floor, and that's all they have. Affordable housing is exactly that. There was a report that came out, Rod made a comment to it. We need 10,000 units. There's only 2,000 units going on, so we need 8,000 more. My position on that is we've got to do it, and we've got to do it now. And so, I know that you need federal funds, right? But we've got to find those federal funds. We have to push that. We have to get the purpose of buildings here that are not being used. I was just down Hills talking about the Hill School. Obviously, that community is struggling a little bit from their school being closed. Can we repurpose that building? There's buildings here, the Goodfellow Building over by the high school, City High. I mean, I've been talking to people. Where can we find these buildings? What can we do with that? And we need to build those relationships with the landlords, with the contractors, to make sure that they are good partners, not partners taking advantage of people, not partners taking advantage of the county. If we start doing these projects, we've got to keep them under control.
Well, it appears we agree on this matter, and that is that affordable housing is probably the biggest problem we have facing Johnson County. And, you know, it has been defined, and we have measured what the need is, and Rod is absolutely right. It can't be all county. We are really working well with the cities involved. Affordable housing works best when it is located near services, services such as grocery stores, libraries, transportation. And when you start putting it out in the county, it becomes less, you create more deserts than you do help the situation. I will continue to fight for affordable housing and continue to support the Housing Trust Fund and the Affordable Housing Coalition. They do great advocacy and education work and development, and we are currently working on a big project, so it's under wraps. Stay tuned.
Thank you. Next question, I'll combine a couple related to law enforcement. First, can you speak to how you would vote for law enforcement contracts for unincorporated towns and generally how you would support local law enforcement? And this is beginning with Mr. Sullivan.
Oh, were you first last time? Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, well, I can tell you what I've been doing in the time I've been on the board. The law enforcement contracts with the smaller cities are really kind of up to them. They decide how much law enforcement is appropriate for their communities. You know, the public tells the councils there what they think they need, and then they do a contract with the board that the sheriff actually negotiates for us. We just recently had, for the first time ever, a city decide to really up the sheriff's contract. The city of Tiffin now is going to be 24/7 because of a contract with the sheriff's office, which I think is a great idea. I think it's important to note that we have 100 and some law enforcement officers that work for the county. Most of those are union members, and I consider myself a very pro-union supervisor, and so we've tried to negotiate good benefit and pay packages for those folks, and I'll continue to do that.
Ms. Porter.
Absolutely. Like he just said, we just went through this with the sheriff. We just voted. We just had a vote just last month. I voted yes. I support our law enforcement, and I think that if we don't support this type of policing in unincorporated areas, it would be like what we are being done down in the state legislature, taking over our local control. So, Tiffin is signing, when Tiffin signed, wanted to sign their, I don't even know what the contract, sign the contract. That's giving them, the sheriff is able to, just like all of Swisher, Solon, all the rest of them is contracted out with the sheriff's department, they're doing the same thing. So, yes, I voted for it, and I am for law enforcement for that. Thank you.
All right. Well, I think when it comes down to law enforcement in the other cities and the county, they already have an established protocol. They have trained individuals. I think they're doing it the right way in the sense that the sheriff and the city are talking, right? So, the communication's a huge part of a lot of things, and if the city's happy to serve, the sheriff can provide that service. And in many cases, I'm going to guess that Sheriff Kunkel probably talked to it, but they probably provide it cheaper than a city can start up. And when these small towns have limited resources, and when you look at the needs they have, and Tiffin's a great example, it's growing at a huge leap and bound. You know, Solon is really starting to take off. So, I think, you know, using our services the most effectively and efficiently, and both sides are together, I support it.
So, by law, small towns have to provide law enforcement, and Bob just said that you, it's really, really expensive to start that up, and it is more available and more economical for a town to contract with an existing law enforcement agency such as the sheriff's office. And so, they meet their needs. You know, Oxford's needs are way different from Tiffin and Solon, for example, the two that have the most. I have supported this. I think that they know what their needs are, and I will continue to support our contracts, our law enforcement contracts with the smaller cities in the county.
As a domestic violence survivor and a parent, community safety is something that's very important to me, and I take a very broad view of what community safety means. I did have some concerns with the Tiffin contract because, in general, the sheriff's department provides law enforcement coverage for towns that do not have their own agencies under the sheriff's purview. The sheriff, they don't have their own, like, specific officers, to my understanding, are not assigned to specific cities, whereas this Tiffin contract was a little bit different in that they were asking for, over time, five more officers to be hired who will be county employees but will be serving only Tiffin. And that just seems like a very inequitable use of resources to be using county money to serve one city only when we don't do that for the other cities that don't have their own law enforcement agencies. And I'm wondering what happens if Tiffin does decide to create their own police department, and we have hired these additional sheriffs now that are now under the sheriff's department.
All right. Thank you. Onto our next question, which, if I'm keeping track of this right, we'll be starting with you, Ms. Porter, which is, what have you done or will you do about growing food insecurity in our county?
What have you done?
Or will you do about the growing food insecurity in Johnson County? Or will you do about the growing food insecurity in Johnson County?
Oh, absolutely. Just talked about that. Knowing that that is one of our huge problems here in town, Johnson County has given monies to the local foods, just trying to help out. We've given more money to, put more money into the General Assistance Program to help out with the food pantries as well. So the work is already being done, but it's not enough. We need more.
All right. Yeah, I think it's very important that we definitely look at our food banks. Most of us in the room don't know what it's like to go hungry, and I think about that and I see people when I'm at work that are starving for food and they have the insecurity. I know that Johnson County has put money into the poor farm, and I think the poor farm has produced a lot of pounds of food. The concern I have with that is the amount of sustainability we have out there. There's a lot of money going in there, a lot of that's ARPA funds. Those funds are going to go away. When you look at that, and again, everybody will have a different math on this, but I've been looking at different math, and we're looking at somewhere between a couple million dollars operating budget each year going into the poor farm. Well, that equates to 40,000 pounds of food, $50, $55, $55 for a pound of food. I feel like we can take some of that money from the poor farm, still keep it intact, but yet change some priorities and start filling these food banks. These food banks, if you look at table to table and they're spending $5 a pound for food, there's something we can do more with the food banks. We can definitely put more food in that. I think that it should be a priority as well. It falls into with affordable housing and good transportation.
When I got on the board, Hunger Task Force had just been completed, and they came forward with many recommendations. So we have a lot of community partners that are working in the area of providing food, and they are applicants many, most years for block grants or every other year, and they are feeling the need. And this is much like the affordable housing. We are moving the needle, but we're not, I mean, it's not done and it's not totally fixed. But the historic poor farm has been mentioned, and while the provision of fresh food is part of it, and we're talking to the tune of 47,000 pounds of fresh produce for charitable distribution and more each year, but there are other things out there too. So it's part of a whole program. Our local foods manager has directed many things that have addressed hunger. We've got a program called Veggie RX, and we've got mobile pantries that are just that and go to areas where the people don't necessarily have transportation to get to the grocery stores, and they are in deserts. So I will continue to support those and listen to all the creative ideas that are out there for more ways to fill the gaps.
So I used to be on food stamps for quite a long time, and I am now in that, what they call the wage gap, where I make just over the line for any kind of housing assistance, food assistance, anything like that, but not quite enough to really get through the month. We tend to run out of fresh produce and milk in the last week of the month. As I'm a state employee, I get paid once on the first. Stretching that through the whole month is hard. That's why I'm a member of the Iowa Hunger Coalition. They recently asked me to be a board member. I told them that I'm pursuing Board of Supervisors, so I can't really take any other additional responsibilities at this moment. I'm also a member of the Hungry All, sorry, Free School Meals for All Iowa Coalition, and we need to pressure the state to pass Senate File 2039. I spoke at the Capitol regarding the governor's refusal to accept free federal money for kids. That was actually, and Mother Jones published an article regarding my speech at the Capitol, and I will continue to be loud and pursue legislative advocacy about that, and I would like the county to make formal statements on that bill.
This is yet another place where the state and federal government have to do their part. County can't fix this. Some of the things that I've done personally, well, one, we raised the minimum wage. That was a pretty good solution, and unfortunately, after two years, the governor and the legislature took that away. I've been a regular advocate fighting for lower sales taxes. We need to have more income tax, less sales tax. That directly affects the poor people in our community. Just this year, we put an extra, I suggested it, and the whole board unanimously voted to put an extra $100,000 into the food pantries in Johnson County. Just this year, Lynette Jacoby, our Social Services Director, suggested a 4% increase for our human services organizations. I convinced her to go to six. And Bob, I challenge your $2 million operating number. We can talk about that later.
Sure.
So there's a lot we have done, there's a lot more to do, and we can't do it alone.
All right. Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Conrad. How would you respond if the school, if these school districts request the county and municipalities support the cost for free pre-K opportunities for all children?
Okay. So, repeat that one more time. I want to make sure I understand it before I-
Yes. How do you respond if the school districts request that the county and municipalities support the cost of free pre-K opportunities for all children?
Absolutely. So obviously, running a daycare, my support of pre-K operations of small children, we've got to look at education, and education doesn't start when we're in middle school. It starts at younger ages. Part of that is food, right? Part of that is having that food. I very much disagree with Governor Reynolds' plan that she cut food for the pre-K for small children, for the summer program. I mean, that's just inconceivable to me. A little bit she had to put in, she could have got so much more. So far as county providing that, you know, I definitely think it's a worthy cause. We've got to make sure that our youth is getting raised correctly, our families that need that service. I think it's very important that we end up having that service there for them. Those are the areas and priorities that we have to prioritize. So when we look at money in other areas, we only have so much money. And so I think that's one of those that can take a pretty high level, and we have to look at other things, though. Unfortunately, that means we're going to have to find some places to cut. Maybe it's in personnel through attrition or something like that, and I've stopped.
All right. This is one of those purview questions. School districts, they can't get cities and counties to fund their thing. That is their purview, and it is a state-level thing. But what they can do in requesting a school infrastructure local option tax, once we get another penny, there's three-eighths of that, you know, it's under kind of, everybody wants that three-eighths of a cent difference, and they have to create a revenue purpose statement. So the school district has come to the board and asked us to allow them to go to different areas to ask for a ballot referendum to, for the different areas to vote on this. This is a local control issue, and so we'll support their ability to put that on the ballot, and you'll see that in some areas this year.
Yes, I would support that as well, and any kind of collaboration that could possibly happen to bring pre-K to our schools. I actually, my child's birth date falling on the wrong side of the calendar cost me $12,000, because that's $1,000 a month in childcare for a whole nother year. So it's a really big issue, particularly considering that the Department of Health and Human Services federally says that childcare to be affordable should be 7% of a household's income, and in Johnson County, it's 25% on average right now. So having to do that for an extra year is a really big burden.
As was mentioned, the Iowa City Community School District came to the Board of Supervisors with a proposal like this not that long ago. I was proud of the fact, Director Williams came to me and she said, "Well, I was told you're the one that understands the numbers, so I want to talk to you about this." And we did talk about it, and I thought, I thought that they came up with a pretty good proposal, and we were prepared to support it, and then they ended up having to back off that for a number of different reasons. But I think that the relationship between the county Board of Supervisors and, for the most part, all the school districts in Johnson County is quite strong. It's, we've got a strong relationship with pretty much all the cities, and we're looking to collaborate wherever they want to. We're always happy to sit down and talk, and I think that's been our history, and we've done pretty well with that lately, and we'll continue to do so.
As the president of the Black Voices Project, I'd just like to say I am a liaison to the Iowa City Community School District, and like the two other supervisors said, they did come to us and talk to us about it, which we all supported it and thought that the Local Sales Tax Act was very important, and we agreed to it, but it was taken away. So yes, as far as anything, if the school needed it and it come to our children, there definitely wouldn't be a no for me, and never, ever, when it comes to our kids with having to free and reduce lunches. This is something I have been working with the school districts for years on. So I'd just like to say, yeah, we all, we all supported it, but it got cut down. So thank you.
All right. Our next question starts with Ms. Green Douglas. What do you see as the top issue or two issues for rural Johnson County, and how would you like to see the Board of Supervisors address those issues?
That's a great question. I think that for the county in general, and it certainly pertains to our rural areas, is growth. And we need to make sure that our growth is both economically and environmentally sustainable. And we have in place fringe area agreements with the cities for those, that two miles in between city and county, and we have village plans to manage that growth. But instrumental to that is the infrastructure there, the roads, the bridges. Those are the ways that our farmers get to their land, and we have a strong record of supporting a pretty aggressive schedule of bridges and road maintenance and repair so that those farmers can in fact access their land. So I would say just maintaining that level of maintaining our infrastructure in the county.
I would agree with maintaining infrastructure being a top priority. Roads are an issue in a lot of rural areas, as is water quality. But the most consistent feedback, honestly, that I have gotten from rural community members during this campaign season has been that a lot of them feel like the Board of Supervisors is an extension of the city councils and don't feel like they get enough contact and proactive outreach from the board. So I will be continuing my regular coffee chats in every community throughout the county once elected.
I think that the biggest issue when you're talking rural Johnson County is land use. You're talking about people who have a generally pretty strong opinions on property rights. Now personally, I think rural land is best suited for one of two things. Either it's environmentally sensitive land that should be preserved in conservation, or it's good ag land, in which case we should be growing food on it. Of course, that does not include development, and that's been the challenge, I think, over the years in Johnson County, is when and where does a person get to build a house? I think we've got the best policies we've ever had on that right now. I'm very proud of the work that's been done over the last few years, and I look forward in building upon that moving forward.
Yep. I want to talk about Johnson County rolling out a new program in the new fiscal year, which is the Pocket Prayer Program for people in the unincorporated area. This is a partnership with the Johnson County gardeners that will add native plantings. When we talk about the unincorporated areas, again, we talk about our land use and what it is, conservation, different things that's going on right now. We have a lot of projects that money is being put to in those areas, so.
So, one of the things that I've been doing and doing a lot of is going to the rural communities. Prime example, tomorrow night I'll be in Hills in a town hall meeting. The next day, I'm going to be in Cosgrove in a town hall meeting. I'm reaching out there. You're going to see my signs everywhere. They're not just in the city, they're out in the county. Why is that? Because when I sat on the Rural Housing Trust Fund here in Johnson County, when I sat on Planning and Zoning, I heard it back then, and that's been over a decade ago as well, is that they didn't feel they had representation. When I talk to them, I knock on their doors, they don't feel they're represented. I think we need to do a better job of reaching out to the rural community. I think we need to make sure that they are being represented. I live in the county. I have always lived in the county. I've not lived in the city limits. I understand both sides of that. I appreciate the city, appreciate the city a lot, and I appreciate all the people here. I also appreciate the county. I grew up on a rural farm. I grew up on a century farm. My work ethic is the number one thing my parents gave me, and I use it every day. And so I think we need to not forget about that we have a very strong rural part of county, and we need to protect that as well. And sitting on Planning and Zoning, I know how to do that.
Our next one begins with Ms. Remington. We depend on our elected officials to work with people whose viewpoints are often very different and come to a resolution. Can you give us an example of a time when you strongly disagreed with a colleague? What was the issue? What did you do? And how was it resolved?
Sorry, I'm having, actually having a hard time thinking of a specific example of one specific time that I strongly disagreed with a colleague. I can definitely say that I have done a lot of work to take classes, read books, on strategies to work with people who don't necessarily agree with you. I am always looking for the connection, what we both care about, how we can find a place to come together and see where we do agree so that we can move from there. I'm sorry, yeah, that was just a really, really hard trying to rack my memory for a specific incident in that moment. But yeah, I'm definitely committed to working with everybody throughout our community and bringing every voice to the table and listening to folks, whether I agree with them or not, and working on solutions that we can all be content with.
I was going back through, and I was looking at my list of accomplishments, and I read off some of those at the start of this, and basically, every single one, we had to bring somebody along. You know, you don't do anything on the Board of Supervisors unless you've got three affirmative votes. And there wasn't a single one of these ideas that had three votes when it was first spoken. And it takes a while, and so I look at every single one of these. Minimum wage, affordable housing, Guide Link, Conservation Bond, Human Rights Ordinance, every single one of those things, you know, I had to help convince at least two other people to come along with it. And most of these were unanimous. And the way you get there is through hard work. You just sit down with people, you answer their questions, you try to allay their fears, and you do whatever you have to do to get things done for the people that need it.
Most recently, we just had the, I don't know what the coalition is called, that VS, what is it, the new one?
The Trans Advisory Task Force?
Yeah, the, what is it?
Trans Advisory Task Force.
Trans Advisory Task Force. When this was brought to the Board of Supervisors, I didn't agree with it. I didn't, because it was, it was put together, I didn't agree with it because of what was going on. I disagreed with it because of just a certain group of people. And when they were saying a certain group of people was being treated unfairly, I thought that then this was, a group should be put together for all people, all residents. We have a lot of people in this county that feel that they're being treated unfairly. So one of the things that I was able to do was to think about how I'm on the federal level, I go out to Washington, DC, and how I can advocate on behalf. I thought about how I can advocate on behalf of them out in Washington, DC, because of what's happening in the state level. No matter what we do here, we can't do anything here. Everything is down in the state level. So I can take their concerns and everything, and that's what I plan on doing in February, taking their concerns and their issues and taking it down to Washington, DC, advocating on their behalf.
For me, one of my best examples is going to be being a director of a union for 28 years. When you represent so many people, so many different interests, when you, when you look at what each person wants out of that, you have to be able to come together and lead a group. I've been that leader who listens. I go into those meetings, you hear things you don't want to hear, you're told you can't do this, you can't do that, and then you've got to find a way through that. You've got to build those relationships, and that's been a challenge, but it's been rewarding. That's why I'm here, because this is going to be a challenge and it's going to be rewarding. And so when I think about our contracts that we've negotiated, and I've had 14 of those every two years, and I think about the negotiations with the state, you know, every once in a while you had to dig in, and you've got to say, "That's not working. We're walking away from the table," and I've done that. I'm confident in that arena. And when you look at what gets you there, one of the things I always tell everybody on the board, when they come in, new, old, whatever, I always look at them and say, "What's best for the members?" Because that's really what it comes down to. That's what this county needs to do. We need to say, "What's best for the people that call it home? What do we, what do we need to do for our residents to make it best?" And there's going to be challenges with that, and it's honesty, transparency, and respect.
All right. I was thinking through in general, and then for a specific example. And as a professor, I think I always look to the teaching moment, the teaching opportunity of any conflict and go, "Okay, well, what does this person need to learn?" of any conflict and go, okay, well, what does this person need to learn? What do I need to impart to this person? But then I've also had to learn how to be the receiver of, of learning. And, um, so I'll, I'll point to Rod. Rod is really good at, at, um, presenting something. And back when we voted on a plan for the historic poor firm, I did not agree with the concept that included housing, not because I don't recognize the need for housing, but because I was looking at, once you put housing on land, you can't undo it. And, um, I, I still voted against that, that concept and voted for a different one, but once I was outvoted, I thought, okay, I know I have to get on board, and I have to make sure that it's the best plan possible. And I've listened to somebody who's put a lot of, um, research into this, and I've learned. So, um, I, I look to it as an educational opportunity oftentimes when there's conflict.
All right. Our next question comes from somebody who says, I think we need an integrated county transportation system. What would you do to create better transportation options countywide? And I believe we're starting with Mr. Sullivan.
I really wish this question went to somebody else first. Because here's the thing, I have been going to these forums for close to 40 years, and the public's been asking that same question for close to 40 years. You're asking it to the wrong people. We can't make that decision. There's federal money that comes in, and it comes into three agencies, Iowa City, Correville, and the University of Iowa. And as soon as you can get Iowa City, Correville, and the University of Iowa to sit down and do that, Johnson County will be all over it. But until that happens, there's absolutely nothing the Board of Supervisors can do about it. And I've literally heard this question for 35 years. And everybody will say they're in favor of it here, and they have been saying they're in favor of it for 35 years. You're just asking the wrong people. Iowa City, Correville, and the University of Iowa. So, when you have one of these for the Correville Council say, why aren't you doing this? That'd be a great question for a Correville group. But for the county, we'll play along. Whenever somebody else wants to do it, we'll join in.
Ditto to Rod. But I, I would like to say that Rod and I are liaisons to, um, the Johnson County Seats Department, and we do want to say that we do have transportation going on right now, where we're having free rides for people to get to and from North Liberty to work, so people are able to call in. So, that was something that was under our control and that we were able to help out with.
This is something that I find very important because I've talked to a lot of people about it. I do think there's a way to get into a regional transit. I really do. I, I think that I've already started to have conversations with the groups that are involved, with Iowa City, Correville, and with Seats as well. And so, you know, I think what it comes down to is we have a lot of entities that have a lot of heads, and they're, they're not sure how to give up their positions there, how to put it together, how to combine it. Every one of them will tell you, transportation is a loss leader, right? It loses money, they spend a million dollars in some case, in one particular case they mentioned to me. So, if we're all losing money together, let's figure out a way to lose maybe less money together and make a better service. And, and so, seriously, I, I mean, we can laugh about it, but what it comes down to is we got to ask those questions. We got to build those relationships. I, I think there's other federal funds available if we can get a bigger transit put together. Um, I'm not going to take no for an answer. I'm going to go talk to those people, and I'm going to push until I get it done.
I wish you well in that endeavor. And, and like Rod said, when that, when we come, when we get a good plan, we will get on board with it. But transit and even a regional transit has to start within the cities and work outward. But we do provide the seats services, and we have been able, because of extra monies from ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, we have been able to put in place some pilot programs, providing, uh, night rides to people in the northern part of the county for work, uh, and, you know, for Sunday after hours when there aren't buses. And, um, so we explore things when we're able to, but really and truly, it has to come, work inward, start inward and work outward.
I also will be more proactively working and reaching out to all of the other parties involved. I know that there have been a lot of conversations over the years, but there's also been a lot of changes in leadership over the years. So, those folks need to get together again, and again, and again, until it happens. We have an MPO, um, which is a department group that has those heads from a lot of those different agencies involved. But like I said, we need experts and we need experience. So, we also need a regional transit commission made of people who are completely dependent on public transportation so that they can help identify the gaps that maybe the county can fill while we're working on creating a completely regional transit system.
Thank you. For our next question, uh, starting with Ms. Porter, please explain your experience managing and supervising employees and managing budgets.
Absolutely. Um, I've been on the Board of Supervisors for five and a half years. Um, when I came on, I had no experience whatsoever before I ran for, um, county supervisor. I literally, um, attended Kirkwood and took an accounting class because I thought that I would be, I would have to literally know the numbers. But being that we have a finance department, I have nothing to do with, um, I have nothing to do with having to worry about the budget. We have a, um, we as a county, as, um, the supervisors, we all go down and work our budget, but as far as literally having to work with the budget, we have a finance team. They are the experts on that. So, that's where I stand.
Okay. Again, with my relationship to unions, so, we have to have enough money to take care of people in those cases. And it may be representation, it may be attorney fees, it may be things like that. So, I've spent a lot of time there making sure we have that money available, and you have to think ahead because you never know when that hits. As a trustee of our retirement account, um, I just was there yesterday, we're at $742 million. That sounds like a lot of money, but we take care of lifetime benefits for people. We have to make the right decisions. I've made changes in those, uh, call them, uh, standards that, that we look at and how we change things to make sure that money does not go away, because there's not a replacement when you start losing that. I'm a small business owner. When I have 52 employees that depend on a paycheck from me every week, that's a big deal. Um, and we retain our employees, and so, that's a huge thing I am proud of as well. And overseeing the budget. I, I realize and I appreciate what Royce Ann said, um, but I'm going to ask questions when I'm in that position and see what else we can do better, where there's something going on. So, thank you.
So, combining those two answers, um, we, my experience with managing budgets is that each department and each office has the person at the head, at the helm there, managing their budget. Not with the elected offices, but with the departments, we are liaisons to each department in pairs, and we meet with them monthly. So, as we go through the liaison checklist, one of the things is, you know, where are you at on your budget? Where are you at on revenues? Where are you at on expenses? And there are certain departments where, you know, their, their expenses are kind of out, outpacing their revenues, um, and then it catches up. So, we know what departments those are. It's just a matter of getting billing and, and that. They manage it. But we do ask questions when we go through the budget process, which is about a three and a half month long process. Thankfully, it's not four and a half like it once was. But we, we ask questions of each department head, and, and then we make decisions on what they would like to have included in their next year's budget. So, that's my experience with it. And as I said to our treasurer earlier, I don't have to know the numbers written down somewhere, but I do have to be able to ask the right questions when, when everyone comes in with their budgets.
My first supervisory management experience was when I was 17 years old, working at the Taco Bell that used to be in the Old Capitol Mall. It was the only place that was open after bar closed, so I was often managing that place in, um, until 3:00 AM. We were the only place that was open until 3:00 or 4:00 back then. Um, as far as budgets go, I also ran an in-home childcare, so I had to budget and do my own taxes for all of that, and I also had employees. And as the Vice Chair of the University of Iowa Council on the Status of Women, we have funds and we have a budget that I help with. That's me and the chair that run that budget. And that's for, again, the whole, it's the Council of the Status of Women for both the healthcare and academic side.
Uh, I got my feet wet on both these things in the early 90s. I was the director of a local nonprofit, and one day, the Chair of the Board came in with a box and said, this is a computer, and this is QuickBooks, and we're no longer using an accountant, you're going to do it all. And I said, oh. And I had to learn all that stuff. Since then, I mean, we now have, at the county, we have a $170 million budget, and I can tell you where darn near all that money goes. And we have over 600 employees, and I can tell you who darn near all those people are. I pride myself on knowing this stuff really well. And if you want to ask detailed questions, I'm here for you. Just stay afterwards, and we can talk about them.
All right. I think I'm all the way around, keeping, if I'm keeping track of my things. So, next one, what would be your response if the sheriff and county legal system asked for major updates to the county's decade-old jail that is currently too small for its population?
I assume that's me.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Well, I think this conversation's been out there, but I think it's a great one to have because there's a lot of concerns and there's a lot of costs involved. So, when you, when you look at the jail and you look what's going on, uh, I haven't seen the cracks in there personally. I have not seen what's going on, but I believe what's being said. And, and when they're putting monitors on there to see if the building structures are intact, that's saying something to us. If, if we look at what happens if a jail gets shut down, um, we're going to have to do a couple of different things. People are going to have to be moved to different locations. That cost gets really expensive. When the sheriff's department doesn't have enough people to transport them back and forth, that creates an issue there for, for the, the power of getting people to and from, and manpower and personnel. Then it also has an issue with, what about when those people leave? So, when I have seen people that have been placed in incarceration, if you take them further from their families, that's not good for them. It makes it harder. There's a disconnection, right? Think about not being able to go home and see your significant other or the people that are important to your children. You can't visit them. Now, we have defense, right? If, if defense can't have a meeting, or we're trying to do Zoom, I don't think Zoom works like everything else does. So, I think it's important to keep people safe in that jail. I think it's important to make sure that we have the right resources, and it needs to be looked at.
What I would do is, I would say, okay, let's start our public education campaign on this. Um, I have successfully, uh, run a bond referendum for Clear Creek, Amana School District. We were up against the Amana faction that was going to oppose it. We got a 70% majority on that. We need a 60% majority to pass a referendum to build a new jail, um, that would safely house both inmates and the sheriff's office, and it is desperately needed. So, I'd say, well, let's do it. Let's start doing that, and let's work towards getting the 60% majority. We've gotten over 50% every single time this has been up for a vote. Um, so, the first thing you do is you identify your yes voters, and then you get them to vote early, and you don't leave until they've filled out that absentee ballot request. And then you take it in, and you keep track of what ballots are still out there, and you just keep working it. But you do that after you have had many, um, educational sessions for the public so that they see the need and they are right there with you, supporting it.
I would say that first off, I would like us to focus on decreasing our jail population through diversion programs, and also by not putting nonviolent offenders in jail and ending cash bail. Beyond that, um, I would, I'm waiting to see the space needs study that's being done on the jail to see what is actually needed. I support changes that protect the health and safety of inmates and of the employees there. I do not support changes that would increase capacity.
I agree with Mandy. When it comes to, uh, cash bail, I think that's a horrible program. It's also not one we have any control over. Um, the bail is set by the state, not by the county, and so, there's nothing we can do on that except advocate. Um, when I started in this job, Johnson County had 111,000 people, and we had about 160 people a day in jail. We now have 160,000 people, and we have about 90 people a day in jail. So, we've done some really, really good work to lower the number of people who are incarcerated. But the fact of the matter is, out of 160,000 people, it's really hard to get that number much lower. I'm very concerned about the safety of the people who both reside at the jail and, and work in the jail, and I'm very concerned about the human rights of the people who are in the jail right now. So, uh, if there's a proposal out there, I will certainly support it.
Yes, there has been many conversations. Um, people have come to me, asking me about the jails. They've told me, we don't need jails because they're only going to fill them up. One thing I do want to say is what Lisa Green Douglas said, is that we need to educate the people because right now, we cannot keep putting Band-Aids on the county jail. We have had the county attorney come out and talk to us and tell us, we do not want to see a situation like the building that went down in Davenport. That's how bad our jail is right now, to be honest with you. It's not good. Um, I don't know, people keep saying, we're going to put people in jail to fill it up. No, we're not. What we're trying to do is, um, preserve people's lives, not just, uh, trying to fill up a jail because we're not filling them up as much as we used to, like they said, because we now have a Guideling Center where we now can take people who need the help for drug addiction over to the Guideling Center. But yes, the, the county jail, um, needs, most definitely needs, we need a new building. We need a new building because it's going to fall down. And that's just it. We have been putting millions of dollars into it since I've been on for five years, and we just steady putting Band-Aids on it, and it's time for us to stop for somebody to get hurt.
Thank you. Our final question, although we have many here that I regret we don't have time to get to, uh, we'll start with Ms. Doug, Ms. Green Douglas, which is, what is one issue that we have not addressed here that you would like to raise?
Well, gosh, that's a tricky one. Um, I think we've raised them all, so, oh my gosh. Um, okay, I, I will put this out there. So, um, we, we hear a lot of, about, oh, the cities, the county need to work together better. We really actually get along quite well, and we work well together. And because of that, we've got Guideling Center. And that was a collaboration with cities, community partners, and the county. And, and so, I would like to just let people know that we do a lot of interconnected communication with our other entities in the county. We also recognize who has home rule and who doesn't, um, over a given situation. So, um, yeah, we do what we can to collaborate and work together. So, I just want people to know that.
In a time where our state government is continually coming after more and more groups of residents and passing legislation that is attacking LGBTQ folks, attacking immigrant folks, um, and closing our AAAs, doing all of these things that are understandably not within a county's purview, I do think that the county can be doing more legislative advocacy. I am a single parent, raising three children on my own, and I have been to the Capitol four times, using my vacation time from my job to advocate for these things. And I would like to see the county making formal statements on legislation, making formal statements on bills, and joining some of these lawsuits that are already happening against some of this legislation.
I think the topic, excuse me, froggy throat today. Um, I think the topic that I would like to have had us have an opportunity to discuss a little bit is climate change. Um, if you look right now outside the window, um, we've had six different storms today. You know, uh, climate change is definitely impacting everything we do, whether we like to admit it or not. And I'm very proud of the work that we've done, but boy, we've got a long way to go. There's so much more we could be doing in so many different fields, and I think it's really important that we continue that work. Things are not going to get better, they're going to get worse. I just heard on the radio this morning that, uh, in Texas, something like 80% of the people can't get private homeowner's insurance, and they're getting it through the state of Texas. That's probably an unsustainable, uh, place to be, and I don't know that Iowa's going to be much different here in a little while. So, uh, we have an awful lot of work to do on the environment. Our farming practices right now are killing us. We've got work to do.
Um, I also would like to talk about, um, public, um, public safety. Uh, one of the things I wanted to talk about was the new program that we've done through Johnson County is the GVI Community Gun Violence Intervention Program. And that program is, um, a preventative program that's happening right now where we have, um, a coordinator, Jess Lang, out. And what they're doing is, um, being able to, um, I like to, I'd continue to say, when we had the shooting downtown Iowa City, or we have the shootings on one side of town and the shootings on another side of town, the gun violence intervention program is to knock doors, to, um, speak to these, um, certain group of individuals that we know are causing problems. And, uh, we have all kinds of stakeholders at the table for this program where we are trying to prevent, um, these types of deaths. We are, uh, law enforcement, probation officers, we've got, um, black men who have been in We've got black men who have been incarcerated. We have men who have been, black men who have been in colleges to go out and speak on behalf of these people. We're trying to prevent things before they happen in our community, and I wish we could have talked more about it, Gun Violence Intervention Program. Thank you.
So as I listen to all of us talk here tonight, and you listen as well, I think one of the biggest parts is just that, building relationships, building different things. And with talking about the cities, like this is in the purview of the city, this is something the city, we have no control over this, or this with the state, it all comes back to building relationships. And building relationships is communication. I think I'd like to get those relationships back. I've been talking to different people in different cities, and, and they say, "We don't have a lot of connection there." At least that's what I'm hearing. So I want to get back into communicating with the city partners. I want to talk to them, see what, what they see happening. I look at, a question that came up last night's forum was the Kirkwood Building. You know, they didn't see it coming, you know, and that's in the city, right? But maybe if, if we have better relationships, we can start seeing that stuff before it gets into manufacturing, we could have repurposed that building some way better. The other thing is legislatively, we've got to communicate, and that comes through forums that happen here. I think we need to have more education, more forums, and more transparency brought into this part of government. Government serves you, it serves the people, not politics, not parties. It serves the people, and we've got to come back to get more forums to get your input.
Thank you. Each candidate will have, now have two minutes to make a closing statement, and we will go in opposite order of the opening statement. So Ms. Porter, first to you.
Absolutely. The citizens of Johnson County should reelect me due to my proven track record, dedication, and extensive experience addressing the community's needs. My leadership roles such as the vice chair of NACO's Community Economic and Workforce Development Steering Committee, and Secretary for NAVCO and Women of NACO demonstrate my expertise. My service on the Board of Directors for the State of Iowa, six judicial courts, on the Board of Directors for Better Together 2030, Board of Directors for Think Iowa City, and FIMSC, along with the Intervention Committee for the Community Gun Violence Intervention Program. This showcases my broad understanding of local issues and ability to collaborate effectively. As president of the Black Voices Project, I amplify marginalized voices fostering unity and empowerment. I am dedicated to addressing key issues like affordable housing, mental health services, and public safety. By leveraging, leveraging partnerships with the Housing Trust Fund, our General Assistance Program, and Shelter House, I aim to maximize resources and ensure access to essential services for all residents. My commitment to inclusivity, community-driven leadership, and pragmatic decision-making ensures I represent Johnson County's diverse needs fairly and effectively. Re-elected me means continuing to have a dedicated, experienced advocate working tirelessly for our community's betterment.
All right. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah. I want to thank you, to the League of Women Voters, for sponsoring this forum. You know, I've actually been a League member for over 25 years, dues-paying member. It was after I realized that Pat Consilla was in it, and I said, "You can do that?" And he's like, "Yeah, they accept men." And so I started paying dues. And I was thinking today, because I was meeting with the director of our Joint Emergency Communications Center, that's where you, when you call 911, that's where the call goes. And ours is state-of-the-art. It's literally the best in the state. It's a phenomenal collaboration between cities and counties. We used to have three of them. Now we have one, and it's really good. And that's the work of the League of Women Voters. I don't know if you knew that, but the League of Women Voters got that done, starting about 20 years ago and ending up about 15 years ago. So don't ever think that the League doesn't have a lot of ability to change things you want to change, because they have and they do. I was thinking about some of the people that I used to work with in that capacity, and some real giants, you know, Carol Spaziani and Pat Jensen, and I see a couple of heads in the crowd nodding, Ruth Becker. You know, these are people that never held elected office here, but man, they got a lot of stuff done. And, you know, I guess the challenge for the current League members and future League members is to continue that legacy, because we can do a lot of things together like that. I am very grateful for the support of this community, and I want to thank folks for their consideration. I promise never to take this position for granted. I hope you will consider using one of your three votes on me, on or before June 4th. Thank you.
I have experienced this community from about every possible angle. I have needed emergency childcare, and I have provided childcare. I have been a DVIP client, and I have organized, networked, and hosted events with DVIP. And it does not matter who, what five people are. No five people are ever going to know everything that needs to be known. But as I network with hundreds of organizations across the community, and as I have lived here since I was 17, and become intimately involved with so many different factions of our community, I know who the people affected are, and I know who the experts are, and I am ready to bring them all to the table. Also, if you want to know what kind of a supervisor I will be, you can look at how I spend what little time and money that I have now. In addition to the things that I have already mentioned tonight, I am a member of the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition. I attend those meetings on Zoom. I am a member of the Iowa Hunger Coalition. I attend those meetings. I am a member of the Trans Advisory Task Force. I am a trustee for AFME12. These are all things that I do on the little time that I have, after working my full-time job and raising my three children. And if you give me those 40 hours a week that I am putting into my full-time job to put into this community, I promise you, I will work hard for you, and you will be happy with the results. Give me that chance. Vote for me, on or before June 4th. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to the League for putting this forum on. If I am reelected, I will continue working for families to make sure that there are jobs available, affordable housing, childcare options, and hopefully solutions. I will continue looking to fill those gaps in our mental health care system, and we were doing that actually this morning in our system of care group. And I will work strong and hard for supporting conservation measures, because they are working to improve the health of our soil, our water, and our air, and we need that to live. I will make intelligent and informed decisions, and I will listen to the needs of the county. I hope that if you haven't gotten your questions answered, you'll take a look at my website, which is elgreendouglasforsupervisor.com, and Douglas has two S's. If you have any questions, give me a call, and I would be very grateful for one of your three votes, on or before June 4th. Thanks.
All right. As I mentioned earlier, public services in my background, it's always going to be there, whether it's here or anywhere else. But I think this is the time, and this is the place to have me in the Board of Supervisors. When I think about my skill set, I've already shared some of that. But I think it's important to understand, I'm connected in many ways to the community, whether it's doing Free Lunch, whether it's doing Habitat for Humanity, the Eastern Iowa Honor Flights, so many things that I enjoy doing here. That connectivity, sitting on the Central Committee for Penn Township, representing Democrats, I think that's very important work. I've been out there, I've been doing that, and you see me if you're out there. I think when we look at people that come and are frustrated with this board, I can identify with that. I can see that. I can understand why. Communication, stuff like that, I'm planning on improving that, and I have my way. I'm different than everybody else on this board as far as how I communicate. I feel it's very strong. I can ask tough questions, and I can have somebody get in my face and disagree with me, and I'm okay with that, right? That's what brings the diversity to this board that we need. What I will do, right, it's not about always what I have done, it's about what I will do. So I have a skill set, but what I'm going to do next is going to make this county better. I have my ways of doing that. And this is a job interview. When you look at that, this is what you need to be doing, is saying, "Who is the best candidate up here?" And you have five good candidates, I'm not going to lie one bit. I think when you look at affordable housing, I'm not going to take no for an answer. When you look at the regional transit, I'm not going to take no for an answer. I'm going to be pushing down that road and making things better here, because I value this community. I value the people here. They've treated me amazing in the time I've spent here in the couple decades. So when we look at transparency, that's how we get the trust back. It's about having people trust politicians. It's all politicians, right? It's, a lot of people have lost trust in politics. That is an important part. I'm going to build those relationships. I'm going to ask the communication, be a two-way street. I'm going to ask people to get involved. We can't always just point at our politicians and say, "You're doing it wrong." You tell me how I'm doing it wrong. You tell me where we can improve. That's the kind of stuff that we need. We need good involvement, and I'm going to welcome that and push for that. So I'd ask for your vote on June 4th or before. Thank you.
And thank you to all of our candidates.
Can I have your voice for like some events that we're doing? Because it is really good.
Well, thank you. The recording of this forum will be available on the Facebook page of the League of Women Voters. In addition, rebroadcast of this forum will be run on Iowa City Channel 4, Coral Vision, and North Liberty TV. See their respective websites for programming schedules. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and that sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Remember, earling voting is now open at the Johnson County Auditor's Office, currently located at the County Health and Human Services Building. Primary election day is June 4th. Good night.